Let's call this meeting ordered. And September 18th, special meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. Yeah, please have a roll call.
Councilwoman Gazzoni.
Here.
Councilwoman Yurie.
Here.
Mayor Percy Morgan.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
We have a forum with Councilwoman Silverstein asking.
Very good, thank you very much. Let's have a pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. Um, who is the good candidate today? Alexis!
Be my honor. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may we have a report on the quick posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 16th, 2024.
All right, may we have approval of the agenda.
I'm not sure to approve it.
Second. Uh, first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, time for a public comment on the agenda items. Do we have any comments?
Um, don't have any speakers to us. It doesn't look like we have any public comment on the agenda item. That would close public comment, and then the public can observe the meeting.
The public comment section is now closed. All right, it's time for the master plan work plan and the prioritization of high priority projects. Alexis, it's you.
Mayor Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, and before I get to my spiel, I'm actually going to take this opportunity to turn it over to Jerry, who's going to be serving as our facilitator today. Uh, so Jerry, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, appreciate that. For those of you who don't remember me, I'm Jerry Presciato from 34th Street Consulting. I've had the privilege of working with the city of Malibu um, in a relationship that just begun this summer, and it has been very rewarding on my end, and I've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of your folks. So, uh, I'm grateful for that, grateful to be part of the Malibu solution, and grateful to be invited back to um, facilitate this discussion. And what that really means is simply this, um, keep us on task, keep us moving forward and focused on the highest and best use of our time, right? You are the executive governance team looking at the mayor, city council, our mayor pro temp, and I thank you for the opportunity to do that. And uh, my only objective is to ensure that we all recognize in a setting like this, we really are setting an example, right, to all those who view the leadership of this great city, that we are mindful of each other, that we don't talk over each other, that we are professional, courteous, and civil with one another throughout. So, uh, the last thing I want to say is the goal here is pretty high level. Even though it's a work plan, we want to keep things at the uh, objective of prioritizing, not getting into the weeds, or getting drilling down too far into the discussions with uh, our management, senior management here in the room. So, with that in mind, I turn it back over to Steve.
Thanks, Jerry, uh, I appreciate it. I know we've been getting a lot of mileage out of you lately. Um, so I hope we haven't worn you out too much. Um, but we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate the perspectives and your career. Um, so again, uh, just to remind everybody, we went through a pretty extensive process about a year ago. Uh, we had a really long list of items, that was the city work plan, uh, which was pretty cumbersome, and uh, didn't really allow us to focus in on really what we needed to accomplish and what we were planning to accomplish and report on accomplishing, you know, over the next six months or a year. So, uh, we went through, um, you know, a way then to come up with a, with a new work plan, I'm sure as you all recall. And uh, uh, we're not going to play again the video today of Lucy at the chocolate factory, but um, you know, again, the whole point there was, you know, trying to match your workload with your resources, uh, and also to make sure that you have an environment where, uh, you know, you, you have the feedback so that you are matching all of that necessary so that everybody can be on the same page in terms of what they're accomplishing, what the goals are, uh, and, and whatnot. Uh, and of course, uh, also recall the graphic that we had, um, about the iceberg, uh, which showed, you know, which was illustrative of the, the large number of day-to-day tasks that the city staff are responsible for. Uh, and then, you know, we tend to see and focus, you know, mainly on the top part of the iceberg. Uh, and again, I think the old work plan, uh, was trying to encompass the old, the whole iceberg from top to bottom. Uh, and while we still acknowledge that that day-to-day work is there, um, this allows us again to drill down and focus on the specific things that staff, that the, that staff is going to be working on over the next six months. So again, we went through this process, we came up with the, with the concept of SMART goals. Uh, I always have to look at the acronym so I don't mess it up. Uh, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. Um, so what we're doing today, um, is a, a tune-up process. We need to be able to set forth what we're going to be working on, I think, for the next six months or so. Uh, also, I'd like to, I think, looking forward at the calendar, um, obviously, we have an election coming up. And um, as the calendar turns over to the next year, um, I think the process that we might want to follow going forward is, um, before we go into our budgeting process, which of course starts pretty early uh, in the year, February, March, uh, that we would go through this goal, uh, process. And that would really lead into what we do with the budget, uh, which would, you know, ultimately for the adoption of the, of the budget for the fiscal year. Uh, and then if we can get into that cycle, uh, and do that annually, I think it fits in well, um, with the election cycle, with any changes in, in leadership, um, and, and keeps us on track with the budget. Um, so what we're going to do today, um, is, uh, we're going to have the department heads go through, uh, the list of goals, we're going to have to go through one by one as they're listed here. I'll give you a status report, uh, take any questions. And um, part of what we're trying to do today is to figure out what's still on the list, what still needs to continue to work, obviously with the council's consensus, uh, what we think can come off, what we've accomplished so far. And we, we, I think you will see there's been a lot of accomplishment here, uh, since we adopted the goals. And also, I think also most critically, what we feel we can add at this point. Um, we do have the list of goals that had been generated, uh, and ideas from when we went through the process the last time. Uh, and we identified that as our parking lot. And um, that is one of the handouts that you have here today. So, before we leave here, we will, we will go through that, see if there's anything on here or any other goals that the council would like us to try to tackle as, as part of this next six-month process. From that input, uh, we will take that. Uh, we will of course need to make sure that we can match up those goals with the resources, but ultimately, we will be bringing back a refresh of work plan to the council uh, for adoption at a future record meeting. Uh, that kind of covers the high points. Um, I will see if, uh, Joe or Alexis have anything that would like to add, or anything that I missed.
No, the only thing I want to add is obviously it's been a little bit of a delay in getting here. We had tried to do some goal alignment with city managers, evaluation, and recall, which I mean, there was a little bit of pushback there. Um, and so that was part of the delay in, in bringing this forward. We were originally going to do some goal alignment with our projects in the spring, um, and then present, uh, a new revised work plan with this group. Um, but due to those delays, we want to get back to this and get back to what we had done before. So that's why we're here now, um, in September.
All right, thank you. Um, any questions from the council at this point?
Uh, just a question about how you want to work the format. They have presentations by the initial part.
Correct.
Uh, if you wanted to ask, obviously, terrifying questions, but do you want to add more to the session then? Or do you want to?
I think we'll take comments and feedback as we go through them one by one. A little bit better that way, I think it's, it's too cumbersome, I think, if we try to do all that all at the end. So, that way we can kind of work through it in bite-sized pieces.
Back to you.
Real quickly, the world has changed since the last time I did this, okay? I mean, when were we going to go through the process to sense that either you could provide the most important things we got to get done in the next year? Where does that fit into this program? Whether they're on the chart or not on the chart? I mean, there's some things that I think have come up that we got to get fixed. So how do we get those on the chart and get those identified and discussed, or whatever the hell it takes?
Right, so as we go through the process, once we've, once we've given you the update, uh, and again, there's no, you know, particular way to do this, but ultimately, I think we want to determine what we're going to keep on, what we think we've accomplished and come off, and then what we can, what council would like to add on.
So it sounds like at the end, sorry, sorry, Steve.
Yeah.
Right, right at the end, and we're like, okay, we've taken two off, three off, whatever it is. Do we want to add things off of here, or are there other things that need to be added to here and go straight to here? So we can talk about it then, so we keep that sort of that order structure.
It almost seems that, you know, the high priority items that we need to get done should go off first, and then we figure out what we need on the list, I think, right? I mean, there, there are things we're going to have to do, that whether it's part of this list or it's not part of the list, we got to make sure we get them done, and then we can fill in the rest of it later. I, that'd be my.
No, that makes sense. And so, let's go through for the accountability purposes, this list. You asked the question, what did you have? And then we talked about, hey, after all that said and done, I would like to see or believe that this should be a priority, we can definitely bring it up right there.
Right ahead.
Let me, uh, I'll, I'll put a quick comment on this. I think, uh, I think he was correct about there may be some things that were bubbled up. But I'd like to also know from the department heads, how do they feel about capacity? Take something on, or they have a high priority they want to mention? For example, um, I'll pick on Puglers and the law right here. He's got a bunch of projects that they've completed, and he says, I've got room to take on some more. I think we could be helpful with that kind of, you know, for reverse. You know, we haven't, we haven't got the stamp, we carry forward.
Thank you for that comment, um, and that actually is part of our presentation. We do have a number of things from the department head and the whole, uh, that we think we need to tackle in the next six months. Um, you know, and some of these are important things a little bit, um, you know, and we'll get into this, obviously, we'll get into details. But, like, for example, you know, speed cameras is probably going to be one of those that's going to need to be on the list, obviously, so. So yeah, well, we, we do have that, and we will provide that as part of, uh, as part, as part of the follow-up, which we do through this list.
Great, all of you are comfortable.
Uncomfortable, let's go forward.
Let's have.
Excellent, sooner we go through, then we get to all those things we're talking about right there. So, should we just identify based on that second column?
Yeah.
So, as you recall, our, our top priority, you see there, are day-to-day operations. We had all agreed that the ongoing services of the city were the highest priority. Um, and then the next up on that list was Malibu culture, working to improve our culture. We all discuss the issues that were ongoing with our reputation and trying to improve things to help us with staff. We've been making a lot of progress. We did, uh, the winter closure, which has now been implemented, and that's been a very successful addition. Uh, and that's now made permanent. Uh, the policy ad hoc group has been meeting on the code of conduct. We are bringing that back the next meeting, at the first meeting in October. Um, so that is huge progress, uh, major progress, uh, and a huge step in the right direction. Uh, so we are continuing to work towards all of those, uh, positive culture improvements. And not here, but internally, we have done a lot of work to try to build out a subset of issue, of projects that we're working on in the HR culture world as well. And once we're a little more finalized with that, we're happy to distribute that to council. But, uh, we have been building that out more. So, uh, the code of conduct will be coming in October 14th. Um, continuing to review any sort of recruitment, retention, and health wellness benefits that we need to work on. We are expanding training and leadership opportunities, uh, for the city. We're, uh, right now mostly promoting programs that are already out there, whether that be through JPIA, or through ICMA, MMAs, all these local government, uh, firms or, uh, membership organizations that are both local and national, uh, with high prestige. So we are giving staff opportunities to go through that and develop their management skills and leadership skills. And we are looking at hopefully developing, building on this and doing more of a strategic plan for operations for the city. Uh, we have obviously our vision and mission well embedded in our code, but we don't really have a vision, mission, and values for operations for, for staff. And so that would be something we want to broach with the council and the council. So this one is ongoing, it's a long road, but this one, this one will be on our list, I think, for, for a long time to come, uh, as it keeps evolving. So that's the synopsis, any, any questions on? No, yep.
When does all this translate to us, our ability to hire more people?
It's ongoing, we already.
When do we see that result end up being hired?
We already are seeing it. Uh, we've revamped our recruitment software, which we've now gone from maybe dozens of applicants to, uh, one of our applications, we had 70 applicants, which we haven't seen since pre-pandemic levels. Um, so already our recruitment software has made a huge, uh, impact. Classic Comp, which is the second row on here, has made a huge impact, we're already seeing more interest in applicants. So all of those things, as we've mentioned before, it's a holistic approach. Um, it doesn't happen overnight. We couldn't tell you that by October 1st, you're going to see more staff on board, it doesn't work that way. Um, it is a long-term effort, and I think we've made significant inroads from where we were just a year ago when we started.
I have a quick question. Uh, what are our objectives when we got together last time? This is recruitment and retention. How are we doing on percentage of vacancies, and we still have the planning department as being a major role?
We still do, uh, we have, I don't have the percentages in front of me, and I apologize for not anticipating that question, I should have. Um, it has fluctu, it has fluctuated, uh, as time's gone on, but we are starting to make some improvement. I know we have a number of planning recruitments up on the website right now, uh, so we're calling those in. We've seen, uh, qualified applicants, and I think we are going through interviews on a number of positions. So, um, there is improvement, and there's improvement across the organization, if it's not just planning and the quality of applicants as well. Um, I, I know we've seen an improvement in the types of resumes that are coming across our desk. But I'll have to get back to you on what the current vacancy rate is.
What about retention? Are we looking at, uh, better, worse? Not necessarily looking at the percentage, but what's the perception?
Uh, I mean, that's anecdotal, so I think, um, it'd be pure speculation, but it feels like we're in a better position than we were. I think it's starting to inch, uh, in the right direction. I don't think we're any worse than we were, um, a year ago. Um, obviously, we had some significant losses due to some of the interactions we've had in the last few months, and that was very painful, especially in the planning department. But I think as a whole, on the numbers, if anything, it's, it's inching forward in a positive direction.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the second one, uh, which was really a, a large subset of, of the first one, class and comp. Study that one, we went through, we've adopted, it's in the budget, um, the new ranges are working. I think this one is accomplished. Um, and it's, it's been a, a very positive one to adopt, um, and implement. As I was mentioning on the first one, the new salary ranges have definitely made us more attractive to applicants, and it's also helped staff as well, we had to get realigned in the different salary ranges. So I think this one was a very successful project.
So I think my question on that is, is that something that's ready to either merge into the one above? So, is that creating a spot?
Correct, it's complete, and this one's come off. And I think those are mine on the first two, and I'll have more as we go along.
So the next one, uh, this has been a longstanding goal, school district separation. This has been, uh, one of the top goals of the city since I came here, um, in 2021, I know since before then. Uh, we've, we've actually, as you know, we've, we've had some, some good progress as of late. Um, and. We've sent out the information about the separation package. Uh, we're looking forward to hopefully a fourth vote by the school board in the fall, and then after that, to city council for adoption, and then at some point onto the county committee as well. Um, so that will obviously recommend need to remain as a top for the city, and something that I'm sure we'll continue to be working on quite permanently, uh, over the next six months and beyond. Alexis, anything you want to add to that?
Uh, no, just, uh, to add on to your point, um, should we reach the county committee and that move forward, which is, uh, prior to, I think, the Thanksgiving holidays, when that's supposed to be scheduled? We will then begin the state process. So to city manager McClary's point, um, we will definitely see this on our schedule for the next six months if not a bit longer.
Yeah, our, our, our group is going to continue working on the possibility of special legislation so we can shorten the, the, uh, state process, state or education process. And so hopefully, that's going to happen. No other questions or comments on that? Move on to the master plan for the community lands.
Absolutely, so, um, master plan for the, the city-owned vacant lots, also known as the Malibu Lands Project. Um, we just, uh, finished our, um, last community meeting of phase two of the outreach and education. Um, we did bring on a consultant, as you know, back in February, and launched into a very robust outreach and engagement process, trying to, um, gain information and insights as to what the community felt needed to be done with the lands, if anything. So we'll be bringing that outcomes report to the city council at a special meeting first, the date of October 21st. It is going to be a very, um, detailed, comprehensive report. We want to give you all time to really look through, digest that, be able to, um, have conversations with your constituents um, from that, and then bring forward the report for action, whatever that should look like at the last meeting in October. Uh, these are all goals, you know, obviously, depending council direction, this can fluctuate, but, um, we did want to adhere to that six-month timeline that, uh, we set out to have as part of this first phase of the outreach. Um, this is something that will be ongoing pending what that action looks like on the 28th. Um, if there is in fact something to be done with the lands, uh, we would then go into an RFP process in which we would bring on a firm to help master plan, whatever that might look like. Um, so it'll be continuous at that point, but until we receive that direction from the council, um, we'll highlight those next steps for everybody, so we want to continue the community participation.
The master plan, uh, oh, my face is. We're not going to actually be designating, say, a pool someplace, or a park someplace, or whatever. The master plan would be the, um, direction for that. But how are we going to instruct the master plan's construction? How do, how do we tell the urban planner this, what we think these sites need to be used for? Or what, when are we going to come up with that package to instruct him to spread it out?
So if, if I understood the question.
I don't understand my question.
Well, we can decipher it together then. Um, so if, if I understood that, um, and just kind of on, on previous direction from the council, um, the outcomes report is intended to provide, this is what the community has asked for and, and asked the council to consider in prioritization. Um, should the council take that direction and identify, we want to do X, Y, and Z? Um, staff will then take that information, we will then go for RFP for the master planning part of that. Part of the master planning will get a more of a deep dive with our technical project review team for the environmental considerations and restrictions, come back with the recommendations as to, these are the lots that X, Y, Z should happen on. Um, and then you go into the fine-tuning of the amenities, major amenities, support amenities, those items that need to be considered and identified, and albeit designed to the extent that they can be um, in order for council to be able to look at funding for those things. You need to have a dollar sign in order to start allocating those resources as well. Um, so those would be the next phases of the process, if that's the direction that we receive.
I would, uh, take advantage of that opportunity when we do that study to talk about funding. I have this idea. You know, uh, council members, Yurie and I both have made comments about deciding aside how much surplus cash we have. I think that will go a long way toward the project plan about what we can do, at least in the first basis. So I think if we talk about some funding currently, that, that would be good.
So, on the lines of funding, are we also going to be pursuing, uh, a policy on naming rights and other private-public partnerships and such?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Kind of hopping into.
No problem.
You just have to be coming up on.
Things are somewhat changing.
Just took a, a quick comment. Um, I think Joe and I have had discussions about the, the fiscal reserve policy, the community lands. Um, and I know we were going to suggest to council that that be a goal that we look at here over the next six months to get that fiscal policy in place. We do have a reserve policy in place, but to, to do something that's a little bit more refined too. Uh, we completely agree, before we start getting into those decisions about where we're going to be allocating money, we need to take a long-term look at what we need to set aside, what level of comfort we have, et cetera, et cetera. So, we agree that that's a, a necessary first step.
Anything else?
All right, thank you. Um, and then, um, we're, you know, the planning director. Teach up off for this one.
Well, this one's a little easier because I'm going to start off with the housing element. Congratulations, the E-based one, the wish line is most important to you. Um, we have published now your staff worked in, in 500 pages of documents. So make sure you have a copy before you read all of it. I'll remind you that the current deadlines right now, adoption, uh, September 23rd, you know, um, October 4th, we technically adopted document, and it has to be with HCD. Um, on, um, October 14th, will be the second reading of the adopted ordinance. And then after that, we move into some document amendments to them as well. So, but that really is the end of the first phase of getting this document in place. But it is only the beginning of all the programs that staff has to take on for implementation. Um, we have, uh, provided to you an overview of the importance of that, and some of the briefings that we've conducted. It's important to check all the boxes down along the line, because making an effort to report with your housing program is as valuable as achieving some of those objectives. They're considered to be the underpinnings of putting that program in place. Um, in your report, starting on page 108, 7.5 housing plan, and there's about 30 pages of the next things we're going to be doing, or the next few years. Um, even though those are told within the general and element, my suggestion is that you keep it as strategic, you're right. I think HCD would value that very much, get periodic updates of all of the activities that are going on. Uh, another good reason to do that is that some of the activities that will be conducted by staff, like, uh, having outreach to, um, housing development community, may be seen as, uh, unpopular or a cross tactic on, on staff to facilitate housing development. But in fact, it's really part of the requirements that we have to facilitate those programs. So I'll just, uh, note that as well, of, of outreach that we will be doing at that level of community. Um, so keeping abreast of that through this document and other, you know, updates is going to be important as well. So that's kind of an overview of that one. Um, certainly you could move it on, but it would not be my recommendation to do so. Um, because this is a work in progress, serious work. All questions?
I had remarked it should be finished soon, I've lined through that and written continue. So, I, I, I stand corrected.
Well, and that kind of leads, so, you know, I've got it, transition looking for opportunities and consultants, question mark. So is this something that our current staff is able to take on? Do we need to continue with our consultant being involved in that? Do we need to have a more robust, um, consulting brought on in order to help the citizens?
Um, I know that right now, this is not part of the current program, um, in terms of its progress. in terms of its program development and implementation. Certainly the code work that will continue through the next year will be, but the programs can be taken on at prior current department. You are logjammed right now, we're doing everything we can to just clear the backlog. That alone may take us six months to do. So in that period of time, we've got no good handles to start notes, no complaints.
Steve?
Oh, Lori, I concur in what you mentioned, I got my notes and say, what about the 2025 requirements? I know when you did your briefing for me, I was surprised that we still had things left to do in part two for 2025. So I concur with this, in my recognition, we keep this on the agenda, and we hand those items for 2025 to the council.
Correct, and that becomes a code requirement as well. So it's important that things like removing the barriers that we have, that HCD identifies as a barrier to put in all times of housing in places accomplished. It's also important to bring your housing code into performance, some state laws, you have weaknesses there. Moving that forward and getting up today will take a few years, so be prepared. That'll go through your funding commission, and then two for final consideration. So yes, you're absolutely correct, the technical here, but also coupled with the beginning of this outreach program.
Anything else?
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Next up is our key public safety projects, Susan.
Great, I apologize, I updated a spreadsheet, but not this one currently, so the updates here are not yet. But I'll give it to you verbally so that you know around these things. The hazard tree removal program, we're in our third generation now, we received another $325,000 grant, we can get $200,000. We moved another 47 trees since April, 550 in total since the beginning of the program. While this is winding down, one thing that we keep hearing, we agreement, is that we would like to see if we can find another grant that would remove hazard trees, but not dead ones, more the hazard trees, there are like palm trees, but they're highly flammable trees. Because this grant only removes dead trees, and so we did our fire liaisons and seal log trees that should be removed or replaced with, you know, renne layer trees, so to speak. So we'll probably look at that as this one winds down, we'll probably be done with this program by the end of the year. Commissions of assessments continue, done over, you know, 500 since we started the program. And recently, we did a direct mail out to the community to remind them that this service is available. Firewise Community Program has become very, very popular, especially with all the changes within the insurance industry. When we started it, there were just two firewise communities, and now we're up to five, with 10 more in process to become firewise. And we're already hearing back from people that they're receiving discounts and won't personally get safer insurance from the council. So it is being effective and supporting the community to create their home, you know, safer, but also to help them with the insurance issue. KLPR cameras, at this point, we're working with Public Works Department. As you recall, we're working on with Edison, that that helped prove, so now Public Works is assisting us with installing poles to approach permits from Caltrans, so that we can get those in, hopefully soon, I'll let Rock come up and add. Emergency plan updates, the plans that we're working on have all been updated. The hazard mitigation plan has been updated and approved by FEMA and the city council. And the emergency operation plan has been approved by the disaster council and is scheduled to go to the city council on October 14th. So that one would be sort of crossed off at that point. EOC equipment, this is mostly, we have a new software system that we're trying to implementing, and we're, I would say, we're pretty close to having it built out. It's always going to be a work in progress, but the initial heavy lift is just about done. EOC training, that's an ongoing thing we've done, we've done quite a few trainings this year, and we'll continue that. Camera management, that also is ongoing, as you probably know, there was recently a camera cleanup down in Lima. And so there, the leases every day, you know, staying on top of that. The emergency supply bins, they have all been assessed in terms of what they need, and everything has been purchased, and we've been working with the team, and we should have all the supplies, a lot of them are still here because we're organizing them, and they should be in the bins by the end of this month. Communications, part of that is the KBO antenna, which is moving forward. Again, another one we're partnering with Public Works, and they have submitted a permit for that, so that's moving forward nicely. And we've also initiated an agreement with the Los Angeles Regional Air, Aqua World Communication System to enable us to have handheld radio capabilities here in the city for our city staff, field personnel, so that we can have better communication to EOC when cell phones are working. Pier substation unfortunately is still in a stalled position, hopefully, but hopefully eventually.
All right, the automatic license plate readers, are we going to put them on the same poles that the speed cameras are on? Is that a possibility of co-location?
Probably not. I think we've gone through and we've looked at all of these locations, or, and the speed cameras are kind of farther on down the road, if that's a possibility of co-location later on. I suspect where your cameras could go up, potentially in different locations in order to be...
That we order...
Yeah. Yeah, there could be some locations where, can I say move them, but till those, till those cameras fall to the left and then...
Mary?
With regards to, do we need coastal on any of those, or are we able to...
I think it's just...
Two quick ones, the solar light, are all the stoplights now in Malibu has solar backup?
Solar backup, no, battery backup.
With the battery backup, someone's got to go out with a generator, even though, right?
So...
Oh, I'm just trying, I mean, I'm just trying to get a real clear and crisp understanding of where we are with that because chances of another disaster are not that far away, and being able to get in and out of the city is going to be important. So just look up a little where that stuff sits.
So for that, all the signals to Anga, Holy John Tyler, Heart Creek, we have a brand-new signal cabinet, a brand-new battery backup system, it's better than we have now, but also have the ability to kind of have our system, or backup system, we can plug in generators, getting those battery backup systems are going to work. Right now, they have updated equipment and batteries in the existing signal controllers, so that system isn't ideal. The new battery backup systems in the later are going to definitely help, and help that situation a lot better.
And a battery backup would give us how much time, you think?
Eight to 12.
Okay. All right, firewise communities, and Susan, this, and I'm getting a lot of calls from residents who are losing their insurance, all right? And you mentioned that some of these, this firewise stuff is helping some people keep their insurance? And if that, if that's actually working, we should tell people about that. I mean, I think that's something they'd like to know, and between joining a firewise community or losing their insurance, but there are a lot more firewise communities, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think they've been letting that information, when we push out about firewise, it's usually a listing manager updates every time. And in conjunction, that is the project that's not here, is becoming a lot harder risk reduction community listing. It's, we can apply in 2026, and this is another thing that the insurance commissioners has said, if our city gets on this list, that will also provide residents another way to get a reduction in their insurance policy that will keep their insurance, and that's what the safety element update is tied to, that we're just now...
Yeah, I'm saying, I mean, I mean, and maybe I got to care and read the management, public managers' updates more closely, but, I mean, most people don't know about that, okay, that firewise community, so, I mean, we just...
Yeah.
I think it'll make people feel like there's something they can do to help themselves, and I think that's important.
And I can tell you that right now, the fire liaisons are pretty much, they're maxed out. Like, they have a lot of people wanting to do it, and so they're very, very busy helping the residents. And so I think we'll probably push it up harder when it comes down a little bit, because we hate to push something out, but we don't have the capacity to do the work.
I just think people like to hear about that, so whenever you can, I think that'd be great.
That's the note I had on it, I mean, is it on our website that other than the city manager's update, there are places people can find a blurb about it?
I'll double-check, but I think so, but I'm not 100% sure, but I can check on that.
Okay. This is just an observing, the carbon light e-sound, are you guys aware that there seems to be some type of a red light problem there?
Yeah.
And is Caltrans going to fix it? How soon?
I teach that with them now.
Okay, and then you mentioned from Topanga to John Tyler, the signals and everything, what about the website?
So Caltrans has, and they continue to upgrade all of the battery backups they're replacing. So every, I think last year they replaced all the battery backups from John Tyler going to Trancas. So they replaced all of those equipment batteries.
And so we've got eight to 12 hours worth of use, I mean, in the Woolsey fire, we were down for two weeks of that power. So do we have any plan of how...
Yeah, if that happens, if it's longer than eight or 12 hours, we'll come out with a generator, and we'll be able to use those generators.
And those are supplied by Caltrans, who the city has generated for every light?
What did we buy those in the last couple of years?
Five years ago.
Over the safety commission. Wouldn't solar be an easier solution?
Yeah, we looked at that, and, yeah, so, we looked at that, and the panel, this is really big.
Okay, just... I was going to say, let's not drill down into, you know, we can talk offline about some of these things, and get info from staff to the city manager, et cetera, but I feel like we're getting bogged down on solutions rather than talking about whether this is still a priority for us in these areas we talked about.
Still a priority.
It's still a priority.
It'll be a priority for probably on every single future agenda.
As it should be in the business.
A really quick, Marianne, Alexis check for website, we do have, I'll give you credit, I'm not going to steal. We do have the firewise information on the fire safety page.
Fire safety, that's how it goes.
I'm sorry, I have one more follow-up question. So are there any items on your list that you feel are completed and can come off, or are these just going to be ongoing?
Footprint updates.
And if I can make council member doing on this, when we get to talking about what's in the, in the project tier list, item 22 on the second tier is the traffic signal backup power, so if that's something you would like to talk about, potentially prioritizing that is on this list as well.
Couple of quick comments on the license plate reader cameras in the KBO antenna. I think I was in high school, so, and being a cop, Paul and I were at the sheriff's Los Angeles station yesterday. We got a quick tour of the emergency center there, and to see what the deputy said that he needed to know was a sample. Here, white page on that sheet, one on tree way, the other pod cities are all represented, they have that system done. And the earth plate just was reminding me that we need the antenna on this, it's impossible to put emergency CVP in the antenna.
So I feel like that's another question.
I understand, but this is a priority that I think the city is going to be having this year. And we're talking about eastern Malibu, we have a touch, is it possible to do that, should we be discussing this?
Let's go with yes or no, or it depends.
Yes or no.
All right.
Looking at Trevor, Ben, we're going to have to look at, create a plan to accommodate it. And we just got that request, maybe we'll move ahead to explore if that can be done.
You got two things you're weighing here, one is obviously what the safety implications, which could justify it, second being it has sat for a long period of time, so it takes some work, have to work with the planning department on that.
I think it's essential.
Me too.
I don't think there's any question. And I know odds of sitting here, his mouth is caught in a shut, but I do think it will depend. On the license plate reader cameras, that's also a critical issue. Those have been in the box now for two years.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate those comments. Let's move on. Joe, let's see if you can make up some time for us.
Thank you, I was anxiously awaiting to speak again, so... Development Services Report, obviously you know, we commissioned a report, had that completed last year. We've made a lot of progress in that vein, and the next item on that list that we will be bringing back shortly is a report on the Community Development Department. As you recall during the budget, we were directed to bring back job description, salary schedule for those positions, and overall plan of how the department would look, so hopefully we'll be bringing that back in the next couple of months. So that's really the next stage of that, part of the Development Services Report, and then everything else is still ongoing in the department. The next item on the list, I actually just had a meeting this morning with our consultant to talk about land management system. We have made some significant progress on the other items that were listed here with a permit review system that we've implemented. We've also updated our current online submitted process, those have been very successful so far. Those are really iterative steps to get us to a land management system. Next up is building out the large land management system project timeline and everything. So we're just about, or we're starting to do the preliminary work to do the kickoff. So I just had a meeting this morning with the team, we'll be meeting with department heads here shortly, and then start getting, crafting the timeline and overall projects. We're also got to do the negotiation with the firm that we're going to hire, so, or the software that we're going to acquire. So that is ongoing, and starting to move that along.
Any questions on those two?
Just real quick one, Development Services Report, that's a Baker-Tiller report.
Correct.
So then, okay. So the only plan right now to implement is going to be the development services person, the development, community development person.
We're working on, everything that was in that report has still been being worked on, process improvement, all those things, improving our online submitted process.
Okay, so this covers that?
This covers, yeah, all that, but that's the next big tranche in that, was the creation of the development report.
Got it.
Joe, unlike the other items that are on this list, you don't have a date in that right-hand column for you to bring back to council.
I do not have a firm date yet, we are still waiting to get back, you know, from our consultant on salaries, where they line up. So as soon as we get that, I'll have a better timeline. Oh, I don't think it keep going?
No, but I'd like to give you a round of applause. I recognize a public safety line item that's pretty significant for everybody in the room, so it took a little more time. I think we're on to the high school CVP. I think we're on to the high school CVP, right?
That's so, I'm quickly on that project signature, where her, uh, face to work is, and Trevor was quite helpful to the high school and said, unfortunately, you can't employ on the basis of the face board were ready for the five year place to. You could have to go back for a third, else you can pay them and then so this is gonna create a gap in the system. But it's required. I know, uh, making a quick overview of what they're gonna need. So that's the only update I have here. It's continuing to monitor and continues for two oaths and rules moving on through the system.
Did I understand that we have exceeded the grading limits already, or we were about to?
We have not to this point, but the culmination of taking face board rating and merging it with face to work and exceeds the limit in the face to rate form.
Okay.
That is what the problem is. It's not that the work was in anticipated.
It's for a future, a future development of several pieces that are there.
It's my understanding that the school, the district reorganized the phasing and the projects that were in those phases. So it caused something that was going to occur later in the project to move to an earlier portion of it. So just as they're going through that, we're looking at phase three and I can't remember if they're at phase five. Is that all gonna be looked at, just four of them?
That's what we understood was four.
So just making sure that phase three isn't going to trigger yet another one when we get to that, right? We're gonna look holistically at it to make sure that we don't have any additional delays when the next phase does get initiated.
It depends on the school district too.
Right.
They control, they provide specificity of what the application is, so that's all the city can do. They can control whether they apply for it.
Okay. Thank you.
So are we thinking we need to keep that on till we get through to the, or is this more day to day this one?
I understand that's kind of day to day, as you wanted us to. I don't see the problem with this.
Tom, take it off?
Oh, thanks.
Not to steal Jerry's thunder, but as a quick time check, we're about an hour into the meeting and I think we thought we were gonna do these pretty quickly as updates. So I just wanted to let you know, just wanna go through parking lot, new items, reprioritization.
I actually think we're doing pretty good because I thought we were gonna go through them quickly and then we were gonna comment, but we're commenting as we go, so I think we're absorbing the time just fine. But everybody be mindful of time, that would be a good thing, right? On the reporting side and on the question asking side. So we're ready for, all right, so moving on to permanent skate park.
Yeah, so we are in the nearly final design phase. We're going to plan check with the Wanda's group, which is exciting, so we should have that done. Final, ready for Rob to take over for Popworks bidding. We're starting the process of buy up to work. We're working on naming rights policy, which you brought up. So we'll have that in front of council work in October to review, provide feedback, maybe adopt if we're on the right track. And just internally, staff is working on some grants for the skate park that we're just giving some final paperwork together for that. We do have a little bit of money left over in case cover donation that will also take into account. I do have some contacts that Parks Corporation commissioners have given me regarding donations and council referring, we got maybe donation coming in for that as well. So we are on the right track, happy to finally pass this over to Rob in the next month or so and get this thing bid out.
But regardless, I mean, we approved on the budget.
Correct.
So we do have funds to move forward, it would just be a matter of fact filling those funds.
Correct.
Or I think, yeah, so we're moved?
Uh, yeah, I think we're gonna recommend actually that we, we keep it, we'll just update it since we're gonna be moving to the finals for construction phase.
We have a construction finish date?
We need the bids to come back.
We have to get the bids back and then we'll see. So we're, we're so.
We have, if everything came as well, then we can get one this summer.
Well, we wanna go, I wanna encourage our contractor.
Next summer is probably like the, versus another wet spring.
Okay, so we'll keep that on, okay. We'll massage it forward with the update. Okay, on to ADUs, accessory colleagues.
So, or update at this point, review, we've been trying to get this, it's not dated since 2018. And the state laws will lead faster than we are, so every year that we go by, January 1st, this open ordinance, there's more to fix and that's where we are right now. We also really see a deliberate march from the California Coastal Commission, since it's subject to review. They raised about six different areas for additional analysis. Apparently, and it moved forward with this because there was some construction of the additional analysis that had to go on here. At this point though, after then bringing it back to the council, I think what we'll have to do is sort of a overview and perhaps just provide an update to you. But we do need to address the certain issues that the coastal commission may move forward. Also Joyce's project as well, so we got too big, tactical assignments for her, she knows. But that's where we are right now. We have not had good progress the last three times since March. So we've lost time here.
Joyce has been focusing on the housing element and this one really needs to have a meeting between coastal staff and city staff. And from my understanding from Joyce, some of the requests go beyond the scope of really what coastal should be considering. They can't consider housing issues as part of the coastal act. And so hopefully staff can, you know, build us on a path and explain that, you know, changes should be pushed through. The law, the coastal act is the standard, and not, you know, alliance with, you know, ADU laws doesn't apply to coastal zone. So a lot of these ADU laws, you know.
You're mungling down this full hour of trucking, so I can hear what you're saying.
Sorry, I was saying that Joyce has been tied up with the housing element, that's been her first priority. But my understanding with her, the, there needs to be a staff meeting between coastal and city staff. Some of the issues that have been forward by coastal really aren't appropriate for them to be pushing forward and for dealing with housing issues which aren't covered in the coastal act. And the ADU ordinances that come down from the state specifically exempt, you know, the coastal zone. So I think that using before with the housing element now wrapping up, it'll be a focus for energies and stuff. Those meetings can move forward.
So lots of technical efforts have been brought in, really making progress, it's hard to take a good aim to move forward on this.
All right, let's move on. Yolanda, you've got the next three.
Yeah, the next three. Cost of vulnerability, it was a technical draft that was created by a consultant. The first phase was completed in November of last year. Multiple workshops were completed and also Zoom meetings to inform of the community of the findings. Then we did the second phase that started in April. During April, we met with the community to get feedback on the type of measurements that they would like to see happen after this report is completed. And the third phase is the getting the survey, a survey that is going through the residents, friendly work on that process. We get a, completing the survey. When the survey is concluded, they will complete the technical assessment and then it will present it to our council with the recommendation from the power. Any questions on that? The next one is exterior elevated elements. This is a state senate bill that passed and makes the requirement for all the multifamily apartment complexes to have an assessment done under California's. So we have received so far 15 applications. We did a massive outreach, not only through different workshops all through the spring and early summer, but we also sent letters, we have been putting newspaper ads, we continue doing workshops. We have received 15 applications, but still a lot of work to do. We have expecting 148 apartment complexes to come in. So the strategy then is to have the meetings with the HOAs to provide more information and see how can we assist. And I remind the council and the community that this is only an assessment that needs to be completed, so no work needs to be done at this time. I think this possibly could be normal operations now that I recommend, but I won't let the council decide on that.
Is there any consensus to take it off?
I would, yes.
Yeah, no problem.
Good job.
Thank you, sir. And then the.
Thank you for the, for the list of people who were willing to do these inspections. Because in the beginning, it was impossible to find anyone who would take one on.
Yes, and thus we are getting feedback from the community that has been helped. Thank you so much for requesting that we put something together. The next one is the update to the technical and coastal engineering guidelines. I remind the council and the community that the guidelines are not being rewritten, they're just being updated. I will have a draft completed by November, so I anticipate this will be also completed in the next, in the next three months. And I don't know if council would like also to remove this as any better as normal operations now.
Look, help me out a little bit with the land slides that we have, first one is written down. I think you had a list of, what is it, 24 or 28?
We currently have 60 parcels that have, they'll have some kind of last night that we're working on.
Okay, is there any connection between, what are those land slides in this update?
No, they are not, they're not being impacted by them not completing the, the update on the topic.
Is there any concern about having those as a priority? I think if you've got 60, I mean, that's like 60 houses that have been in Woolsey Fire. Is there a need to prioritize that or how do you?
And that would be my item to add to the list as one of for EST. Our last lies to make sure that remediation can, can be added to the list as a priority for EST. But I, I, yes.
I've always meant to, I team up with very well.
And I have other things, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Yolanda.
If it's agreeable with the council, let's take this from off.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Makes it really clear on the next slide.
I'm sorry, did I miss that? Was that, that update, geotechnical and coastal taken off or just the one before it?
You're welcome. Last two on that page.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. All right, moving right on to Joe to finance operating.
I made a rookie mistake by succumbing to the server that's over next to me. I apologize, the wrong time. But the fee schedule, I think you know, we're about to schedule a workshop probably in the next couple of weeks. And I think this one can come off, we're just about done. There is still a little bit of work and probably some decision making from the council, so probably another month or two on it. But it's, it's really at the tail end of it.
Agreement to take it off?
Yeah.
Yes.
We got the schedule, right?
The next one, the IT strategic plan, that one is moving along. We are very close to having a final report. We actually met with all department heads a few weeks back. I don't think it's been a month or two, but we did some prioritization of all the projects, tried to map. We have a list of like 60 different IT related things that we need to do that impact all departments. We tried to put a timeline on them, ones that are pretty far out, ones that are maybe the next fiscal year, maybe the next couple of years. We have that, we're almost done with the report from our consultant. And in the meantime, we're still working on all those things that need to get done and we are making a lot of progress on that. So that one is ongoing, I think that one will stay on here, but we are making some, some good traction on it.
It remains on the list, correct?
All right, if there's no questions, we move on. Next one, Alexis for the Melvin Community Labor Exchange Permanent Office.
Yes, so I think this one kind of has been just happening below the surface, so excited to report on some significant progress. Just to highlight for the council, I know the original intent was to have a modular office. After running into some issues with the pouring of the pad and some other things in doing it in CDVG guidelines, we have moved to doing a permanent office with some modular panels, so more of that prefab. But we are finalizing that design. We did have a design review with MCLB just Monday, actually, to finalize the programmatic needs, ensuring things like electrical load and whatnot are taken into account as we finalize those details. Yolanda's been an amazing help with all of that, make sure that we're adhering to code. We do have a development review internally with the group of our departments and as well as LA County Fire. So we'll be going through the schematics of that and then we'll be doing construction documents and going and pursuing that bid process. So this will be coming back before the council in terms of what that construction bid looks like, in terms of appropriating funds. We're still working with the LA County and through the Community Development Block grant, through their capital expenditure funds to support most of this project. But we'll be able to bring more information to you as we get those different bids in. That project schedule, as you can see in your packet moving forward, is to finalize the design and go out to bid with 50% construction docs. We want to get the solicitation moving forward and get CDVG's review and approval on that. Our plan is to go out to bid December 9th, or at least the week of December 9th, solicit that through the holiday winter season and bring to the council that award in consideration at the first meeting or second meeting in January and then wanting to move forward. So it's an aggressive timeline, but we're on track to meet that unless there's some unforeseen delays. Our recommendation is to keep that here as long as this still remains a priority for the council.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? All right, Yolanda, you for supercell water facility?
Yes, last month, we gave a comprehensive update on phase two. Real quick, we're able to do it, adjust the phase mapping and move Sarah Retrick neighborhood into the street. Currently working with the regional board as a daily now, trying to get the L W to the city and the regional board completed. They're planning to take, revise L W with implementation dates on when phase two is gonna be completed and worked out. I think they're looking in the next, next month or two to kind of get that to the regional board. Once that's done, they'll come back to, to the council for adoption and then we'll keep moving on. And the redesign for these two, so that's in the works. I think everything's kind of moving really well and on schedule and kind of, kind of moving along as I mentioned earlier.
I would think it's gonna continue on the list until you get to the building. I would think it's going to continue on the list until it's available.
Next one is, is mine too. I've got a back to back. This is the PSC stimulus utilization project and you can see out in field, we're, we're right along with the project. We're, we're completing the last little phase of conduit work, which is, which is , I just try to record it, I happen to get that done probably within the next one, or next week or two. And that's the majority of the conduit work that's been done. Go back and start working on all the traffic signal upgrades and you get a network that works. It'll on schedule to be completed by the head of the year.
I will go back to the tour we had just had at Sheriff's Department. They are anxious to get your traffic cameras into their system and hear their tales of what they can do with it. I think they'll have to put one. Not, not with plenty of time.
So is this going to stay?
Yeah, I think we're going to stay, yeah.
The cameras, red light cameras and traffic cameras, that's all part of the system now.
The, the, a red light cameras are not, if that's going to happen, we'll do that every time. Doing evaluation on it, it's, it's a little bit more complex than having to hear anyone delay this, we can kind of get this up and running, go into the other, sort of, sort of do. Stay in the back and kind of, kind of, that's, it's, it's very complex.
But the traffic cameras are part of it.
They, actually, there are cameras that are going to be used and used to, that will have ability to kind of transmit that data to Caltrans and main headquarters. I'm working with them, we're going to kind of see, that's the same information that the sheriff reviews or whatnot, work on all the, okay, very good.
You got a little page left.
I believe we got to the other list, so thank you for your feedback on that. Jerry, you were keeping score.
Five are coming off, right? And let's just give everyone in the room a round of applause. Leadership of the council, the work of staff, et cetera, the great advice that the council, thank you. So with that in mind, Steve, you know, we talked about, our council member part of, things have been bubbling up since we last did this, right? Prior to priorities, should we handle that by getting an update from?
Well, what I was going to recommend, if council is okay, is I just wanted to give each one of the department heads an opportunity to suggest any goals either for this next six months or anything that kind of wanted council to start thinking about, you know, kind of the roads. And then that way council has an opportunity to hear kind of everything that we're potentially thinking about, and then we'd be happy to get council's input. And again, we will take all this back, try to match it up with the workloads, resources, and bring it back in accordance with council's desired priorities. So I think we'll just, in particular order, Kelsey, were there any goals that you have identified for this next round?
I don't have any. Most of our goals fall under the ever increasing day-to-day operations, but nothing specifically rises to this level.
I would say Snack Shack is definitely a big one, working with Paul Morris for Rob. We already started the process on Rob's shoulders mainly, but I think that that's something that'll pick up sometime.
Is that on the list?
I think it's number 34 on the list. It doesn't specifically say Snack Shack, but I think that's where it is. It's part of the list.
Yeah, we could define that as, that'll be part of Snack Shack, right? Snapchat, sure. Okay, that it?
Yes.
Alexis, Joe, anything?
Well, I think there's a handful of things we already know that are bubbling up. The things that we've been working on that have taken a significant amount of staff time that never got on the list. This may take up some of the department items, but PCH safety, you know, that's not on our list and that's been all consuming. Touched on the Snack Shack. We have talked about fund balance policy, the reason why, Steve and I thought that that's probably something for discussion here. Our finance team is really focused on year-end audit. We're also doing, which is really day-to-day, but it's a big, significant internal items, upgrading our financial system. So there's a lot of things competing with time, so we thought that was something that should be discussed. And I think there's some other things that we have.
Yeah, and just to confirm, yes, PCH safety, and I think you have to differentiate the two. There were, you know, there's certain items that were done kind of in immediate response to some things, but long-term and sustainability and we've got the speed cameras and implementation of that, but even when that gets absorbed into day-to-day, right, it's, it's going to be quite intense in terms of tracking that. And Susan's got a few more items that have kind of met that metric too. But the others, without getting too far into it, is, you know, trails and easements. Those are, it's going to be a heavy, heavy lift for some of that. And then communication campaigns in general of taking that broader approach and more proactive towards communications on all of these initiatives where we've implemented kind of a practice internally of as these items are, are meeting their milestones and we're coming to fruition that we're making sure that we are letting the community know that, where the community gets their information. And that's become, become quite a heavy lift, as I mentioned, in its own way. So those are just some of it and, you know, the certain more CFC projects, but I have a lot of safety as well.
Are those more day-to-day projects? Because I think this is the PR work, communications work, and it seems like that's just part of the PIO.
Yes and no. So there's day-to-day and ongoing programs and things that we know. For example, if we know, you know, it's Preparedness Month and there's, you know, various safety, some, some of the things that do become day-to-day, right, we're just making sure it goes out there. But then there's other items that are either tied to the high profile or if it's, you know, in response to the community lands, whatever it might be, it's taking that broader brush of, of what are we trying to achieve with that? And are we trying to get community participation? And if so, and what way are we doing that? So it's just become quite evolving. So there's the day-to-day programs that are happening and then there's, say, this project list that has its own communication campaign running parallel with it to make sure that we're communicating it out.
And yes, a little bit's day-to-day, and I think some of it we would, we would want to ask in terms of trying to be more proactive and, and I think more comprehensive.
All right, we ready for Rob?
Yeah, so I think Kristen, Kristen made one of my, I had to think was the Snack Shack or Snap Shack?
You want the Snap Shack?
I want the Snap Shack, yeah. So that's, that's going to definitely be one. Just kind of want to bring up kind of a little bit about the signal scene and overlap with speed cameras. We're currently already kind of just working to technical on developing plans and strategies of how we can implement some of the camera locations and get the additional signage to have it along with that, so we're working on those details now. But that's going to be a big lead camera road. Hey, another project that we're, that we're working on is Los Flores and Rambla Pacifico intersection improvement. That's going to be a redesign of that whole intersection and on the safety at that location. So those are the, those are the ones that come to mind, by the way.
I definitely would endorse pushing number 25 into the, which is the Los Flores and Rambla Pacifico intersection up into the priority list. And I know that at the CAG meeting, we have money coming for that in the next act, in the next budget year.
There's potential money in the corporate side. How do you look on funding? Because I know at one time you were talking about $15 million.
It could be right now, we, as we have, we currently have funded five million. We have the two million that are going to, that's going to go to it. So we have seven million that's going to go towards that. Design's not going to cost that much, so that's going to get us to a design and development phase of where, where we're kind of, what that, that whole intersection will look like. And it could be real expensive, it could be enough money, we just don't know yet until the design process comes through.
But you're playing ready to get started.
Yeah, absolutely. And then we have future here that we can add to it too and stuff, and there's grants and things we can supplement that growth.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to determine consensus on that number 25? But then, but then?
Let's bring them all back together at one time.
Okay, very good.
The other thing about number 25 is Caltrans has been talking about replacing that bridge there also. And I don't know if it's going to happen soon enough that it becomes part of the project.
It's, so that whole project, we're collaborating and creating Caltrans to take on and we're going to, we're going to come together to make that one project. They have some other elements that they want to design in, and in there too, we're going to put it all together in one big project.
We'll, we'll count that all as number 25 right in there. Was anything else, Rob, on, on your end?
I think that's it.
Thank you, Alanda, for taking up the time so quickly.
Yes. Good news, out of the parking items for ESD, 37, 39, 40, and 43 has been completed. So let me give you a few updates. 37, the residential solar energy system, this is a state bill that requires for the jurisdictions to have a streamlined solar process to an automated process. As of September 30 of this year, this will be completed. We have joint efforts with Symbian to do the solar permits through electronically and expedited form. So we are doing the outreach and the webpage is completed and this will go live September 30. So that's 37 can be removed.
Okay.
And then number 39, your soft stories inventory. This city, we have identified 39 multi-family structures that fall under this vulnerable structure that we would like to continue keeping an eye. So that also has been completed, can be removed out of the list.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is 40, strengthening our bumper program. And we, with the new hiree of Solicia Antico, she has done a great job of keeping the program, coordinating with code enforcement, tracking with the county and to make sure that we are on top of those reports and doing the site visits. So I think, I feel that this is more a normal operation for us, so it could be taken out of the list. And finally, 43, the post entitlement base permits. So the state of California had AB 2234 that required that building departments use their websites to post examples of building permits that have been completed for housing, kind of just giving an example of an ATU, duplex, a multifamily. So that also has been completed because we needed to be on compliance at the beginning of the year, January 1st of 2024, and we were on compliance. So for me, that could be also taken out of the list. And then just for your entertainment and things that we could add to your programs, our environmental programs are very, very successful, so I want to continue fostering and moving the goal a little bit. One of them that community members have brought to you is the volume ban. That is something that we can, we have everything ready if that is your desire to have moved this forward, this will enhance your per, your environmental programs. The other item?
The Mylar program.
The Mylar will lose.
This is our lose?
No, this will be.
This is the one she wants to add to the list.
And then the other one is the water conservation pledge. About a month ago, our city manager and an environmental group met with the oral supervisors environmental unit, and they are reaching out to the different jurisdictions to have a more consolidated effort moving toward sustainability. And one of the items that they are proposing is water conservation. So it's a water conservation pledge that also can give us a resolution. And we anticipate that this will be a joint task for the implementation with the county to make sure that we want this.
So how would this differ than our already adopted water conservation ordinance?
We have a smart, a smart California, are you talking about this smart California item that we were working with?
Now, we already have a water conservation ordinance adopted with the city, so I'm just kind of wondering what, how does this differ from that?
I'll have to come back to you because I have to look at photos of them, but I think this is a little bit different, but I will, I will provide you with a little bit more background on this one.
Thank you.
The other item, since we already completed our soft stories, and we have been experiencing some earthquakes, I know this is a big take on for a jurisdiction, but what other jurisdictions have done is they have implemented a specific ordinance to retrofit this soft stories. So we're talking about a possibly soft story retrofit ordinance, which will create, it's a safety issue, and this past earthquake's kind of brought to our attention that we need to continue keeping an eye on those items and then, and yeah, this is going to be a big undertaking. So I don't, so just for the council to entertain and, and for me to continue advising you on that, so, so far, ready.
Thank you, you're very, very good.
Well, so you recommended removing the soft story inventory. Should we actually maybe transition that to be, instead of removing it, to clarifying it to the next phase of providing?
Yes, but we only kind of called it inventory, maybe that's the second phase of, we identified the stories, now what are we going to do about it?
To retrofit recommendations.
Soft story retrofit. And just to be, just to be clear, these are parking lot items and these aren't really on your top 20 list?
I understand. But instead of removing it completely from the parking lot, have it on the parking lot as a possibility to elevate it, it's kind of my thought.
Is there somebody from the family or is this all of us?
Oh, multi-family.
All right. The one item that's in this list is number 31, impound yard. And I don't recall, I think that is for year-round impound yard, which right now I think that is an issue that needs to be addressed. We have a summer impound yard, which basically is a day-use drop site for the tow companies so that we can actually tow vehicles. Since we've taken over, you know, breaking enforcement, we've gotten our contracts, we've become, we've been increasingly aware of the issue of not being able to tow a lot of vehicles that should be towed. The tow companies are reluctant to come out and tow sometimes, and sometimes it definitely just cancels it if it's going to be an hour, they can't sit and wait. And the tow companies have given some pushback to our last team only because the sheriff's contract with the tow companies does not include a drop fee. So what that means is if you're going to tow a vehicle and they come out, but in the meantime, the people have come to their car, that the tow, you know, you, to be nice, you don't tow the car, right? So some cities will have a contract, a separate contract, that will at least give the tow companies some kind of fee so it's worth their time because they've been upset that sometimes they show up, but their, the car's being released to the individual. But it's because of the sheriff's contract, they get nothing if that happens. And also, we have towing issues year-round and my friend, I think I'm the last team, they're helping me do an analysis of how many vehicles do they see every day that should be towed, could be towed, but we can't because the tow companies don't stage vehicles here. It's just too hard for them to come out and tow things. So they really need a staging area for days, just like what we have in the summertime, and the Public Safety Commission has looked at this, and they made a recommendation that, I haven't brought to council yet because I've been trying to get all my research, so you can kind of get the whole issue, but they recommended using a very small lever of one of the city lands.
So aside from the impound, any other items that you wanted to?
Yes, so that one I think should be elevated, actually. In addition to that, as you know, we are now updating the safety element, which is very important. Not only is it just required by law, but it is also the piece of the Not only is it just required by law, but it is also the piece of the puzzle that will enable us to help our residents with insurance issues, require insurance. Also, as you brought up with the crime center, the sheriff's station, I call it the Fuses Project. That also is something, is kind of a joint project, I mean, it's come to me, but it's also an IT project because we, I know Mario's been in communication with them, but I don't know what their current status is on that. We need to really think about this in terms of strategically, what cameras do we want in that system? Because right now, they've asked about city hall cameras, which I agree that we should have some of the city hall cameras fed into that system. Lobbies, maybe city council chambers. This is really.
I, I think we could probably handle that on the day-to-day side.
Okay, okay.
I, I think we'd all agree that that's a goal we want to pursue.
Okay. And of course, this, this speed cameras, which is hopefully gonna be relatively very sensitive.
I think that's the, I think, after school security.
All right.
Sure. I'd ask you to look differently if this could be your main board by terms of the needs for organizational improvements and, and what that may, you know, some of the tier two list. As we briefly discussed, twenty-four, the eighth, these are expansions of the outdoor seating text amendments and some of the children around total sharing components. Well, that one might move into the housing department. We're not gonna have people to work on those for at least six months in the top of it. So I would also ask you to look at your, your A three by number fifty-five, stand-up amendments. There has to be, and I say this raised the appetite for us on everybody's part to push back the nice to have in favor of the less students. And that's what I would focus in on. It's going to be some structural, actually structural corrections in how the department gets occupied. And this is gonna be an ongoing issue for that is into an implementation phase.
Would it be better to, because I know we've had the schedule in January, to bring this, bring this whole portfolio back? Would it be better given that you've mentioned six months several times? Would you be better off to address that at that time and try and see what resources are available? Is there a balancing that you might be bringing in?
Sure.
I, I would concur on that one, but it might be a couple of months at long.
I think, I think we all know that these are all, you know, in the past, nice and happy, search of, remember, events and that's.
Right.
Certainly, certainly is, but it's good, but I think the problem is about six months in January. Let's see where we are in six months. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, well, on the outdoor seating, is, is the council's appetite of something that we, we want to see a sun setting that, that allowed or is that a little?
So that, 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 that's already sunsetting. And the ones that are out there are either being referred to as an active tow enforcement case or they're in process of getting their permits to make them permanent.
So applying for C U Ps in order to continue to have it. So whether or not they'll actually keep it, it's all based upon the approval of those C U P.
Correct, right, and we're looking at everything, including waste harder allocations and apartment assets also in this department.
I'm kind of inclined to say in three months, I'll be back here with your council, your old council and have a better view of what, our resources, everybody's.
I just was, I've been trying to keep score as we go along here. So far, we've got twenty-four and twenty-five going up to the priority list.
Well, I don't know that you've asked for consensus yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So, so this is a good, that's a good segue though. So we had this list at about twenty, right, if I'm, I'm looking at my city management team there. And, and that was a reasonable number, it was determined. This all predates me. When we look at the allocation of city resources to projects and what we're able to undertake. So I think we should start with that idea that, okay, five are coming off. Let's look at five that can come on at the council's wishes here. And then we look and see, okay, are those still a fit? Some kind of quick assessment on, do those work or are we just putting five on that are gonna overburden Susan, you know? So let's, let's just start looking at that, Mr. Mayor, if you can, I guess.
Well, I think.
I think we did, yeah.
Terry, I think there's two part to this. One is if you want to put it on and this receiving or sponsoring team member having the capacity to take it on.
Very good, absolutely. Those are two, and we're on the same page there. But one thing we've skipped that, that we hope won't take a ton of time because it's twenty minutes away from our appointed time. But were there issues that you wanted to bring, what department has for each council member that you wanna bring up to say that's maybe not on this list that you'd wanna add for consideration? Go ahead.
I, I got a couple. I agree with what Alexa said, this, these speed cameras are gonna take up an enormous amount of time. I mean, getting that thing implemented, understand how to make it work, understand. I mean, that's, so to some extent, you know, that may take up two spaces, the amount of effort we gotta put in to make that done. Second thing is, and it goes back to the community services thing, you know, we need to fix the planning department, okay? And one of the things we talked about earlier was having your community development person. Seems to me I should have the community development person in place as soon as I can because that person should be the ones hiring the planning director to make sure we've got that, that piece in place. So somehow accelerating that upfront so we can get that person in place and make our planning department work a little bit better. And then I think, well, okay, recruiting. And I hear us going through the cultural improvement process and I like all that, I think it's good. But I gotta start filling the damn slots. I mean, I, and we've talked about this, will we go up, put a recruiting bonus in place? Whether I try and skill people from other cities, I don't know. But we gotta get people in there and get it done because, you know, the, the issues that we keep hearing about is I can't get stuff through. And to go back to what Green has, I mean, how many, how many appeals do you have coming at us?
I think about two in, oh, I've got one the other day from two thousand nine.
Okay, I mean, so, I mean, this, we're gonna be sucking up a huge amount of planning resources. And we just gotta get some, and we talked about, and maybe I don't know who was in that meeting, we talked about other approaches to making that happen, you know, as opposed to like Richard's, Richard's approach when he was here was to go out and hire highly trained people, come in and, and, you know, move into the planning department. There may be other approaches. When I was working, I, I think I started out working for Arthur Andersen, county firm. And what you do when you started there, they brought you in as a rookie and they gave you all the grunt work to do, right? They had to go out and do payroll studies and account payable study. So maybe you could, you could use the same process in the planning department that says, I've got my senior planners up here, I'm bringing a bunch of people, maybe not highly trained to them, and they do the grunt work. They take a look at T D S F, they took a look at setbacks, they take a look at, you know, second stories. And they, because those are mechanical studies, right? And when they get those done, they turn them over to the senior planner. And over time, some of those people will prove to be very talented. And they can start moving up the ladder to become the senior planner. So what you're doing, you're building a pipeline, all right, over time to keep that thing full. We just gotta think about different ways to do this because what we're doing right now isn't working.
So those are, those are great solution suggestions. I don't disagree with what you're saying, you know, they sound great, but those are the solutions. So the item itself is, doesn't it fall within the first one about attracting and retaining talents?
But yes, but my point is, I think we need a more aggressive, what I heard when we heard that presentation, I need a more aggressive program to go out there and start recruiting. We haven't had that. That's, that's.
Thank you, appreciate that, councilmember Steve, thank you. Other members of the council?
One, one more, just, and this is sort of just to keep on our radar screen, this Point Dune Club got sold out, okay? And I don't know what this, what, what the impact that is going to be on the residents. We've got a mobile home park organization, whatever, okay? It was, was dealing with rent increases that we hadn't had in place for over a year. Depending upon what happens, we may have to bring that back, just.
Thanks for putting that on the radar, I appreciate it.
Well, we're really looking right now at the things within the next, that need to be done now because we're gonna do a full review in January. So this is an update.
Okay.
I, I'm almost inclined to defer anything that's suggestive until we look at it in a broader sense and what it is.
Are there any others though from the council? I don't wanna, this hasn't been our opportunity to.
I have a huge list.
Okay. Let's hear it.
Well, I mean, we're, so, some of the suggestions, so for Fourth of July, instead of promoting fireworks or not having fireworks or anything, drone shows. So could we implement something where we have a policy or the city puts on drone shows instead for the community? That's just something to, to bring an environmental, a safe environmental plan, but also provide the community with some fun things to do on Fourth of July. Goats, the, the county has a new program where they're implementing goats in sheep for brush clearance. Malibu West has been successfully doing that, but looking at expanding that out to offer the neighborhoods or the HOAs and other community developments the opportunity to take part in that program so that we can help with reducing our fire rates and just protecting our neighborhoods and such. On safety, generators, you know, have we looked at making sure that the gas stations, the grocery stores, E D chargers, urgent care, all have emergency backup power in the event that we have something.
Your water system.
So water systems, making sure the water district twenty-nine is actually provided for the backup generator that they told us that they weren't gonna have.
So generators for key services, is that what you're thinking?
Right.
Critical services.
Critical services. I know I've been approached by the, the food trucks that are going throughout the neighborhoods. They're really causing issues and problems with the brick and mortar stores and also impacting residents with them stopping in traffic, blocking streets, noise and odor issues from the food trucks. So we don't currently regulate them, they're just left to L H M health. We have nothing in our jurisdiction of how those are monitored, we're not allowed to operate in our community. The outdoor dining I had on there, you know, we have dark skies coordinate for residents in our commercials, but we haven't tackled it on the streetlights. And the county has a large community service district for our area. And there's money that the county has in order to upgrade our streetlights to L E D. And I'd like to see us be working with them to utilize those funds to make sure they don't get allocated someplace else. And Edison has a program with regards to that upgrading. So reaching out to work with the county to make sure those funds are spent on area instead of just sitting on the books. One of the other things, looking at neighborhoods about red flag for no parking. I know other communities have implemented no parking on streets during red flag days. I know Big Rock and some of these other neighborhoods where they've got limited ingress and egress. If we could have implemented a no parking on red flag days would help with any evacuation concerns in those neighborhoods. Lower cost accommodation, we've never upgraded our L C P to modernize it for more recommendations. And that's my list, I know.
Pretty good newsletter, pretty good newsletter.
Come up, okay, I would love to see the impound yard, year-round impound yard, make it into the, into the priority list. And the other thing that belongs in the priority list is the Malibu Blues Park improvements. We've got the snack shack and we also have the skate park. And I think that could all be together since it's stuff that's all gonna be confined to that area. And.
Just for clarity, we're, we're recommending keeping the skate park on, is that right?
I'm, I'm gonna add to that, right? I wanna, I wanna merge in with that the snack shack also. Or is that gonna be too distracted?
Separate.
Separate, okay, then I want a separate one for the snack shack. I guide me enough, I'll get there eventually.
The snack shop is on the capital improvement program also. So is that something, how does that work? Do we need to have it on the work plan and a capital improvement plan? What's the better use of allocation of time so we know that?
It, it's those projects here that you're kind of like, hey, yeah, these are priority, we'll push them up to the front of our five-year plan. So we have a list of projects that are proposed due this year. And from the priority one here, they'll go up in the front. So they just take priority, they'll get initiated, priority four, they go to.
And we typically don't get through our whole.
Mr. Mayor, do you have your suggestions?
My suggestions are already on here.
Okay.
They need to wait till January. But the point is, I think we do have some items that can't bubble up to the top. And it's also has, I go back to Alonda's area, she's got a couple of things that she'd like to bring in now. I think it's easy to identify which ones we want to add to the list in January.
We want to identify.
Terry, you gotta, Terry, we want to start with this one, you're keeping track of it.
Yeah, there's some good chickens bred. No question. So, so we do wanna talk, we have time, right? So let's talk about, you know, one, some have come up, let's knock a couple out right away just so we can feel like we've done something here. Councilmember Paul brought up twenty-four and twenty-five, twenty-five really, right? So let's talk about twenty-five, the improvements of intersection in Flores, Las Flores and Rambla Pacifica. Is there consensus on that one, Mr. Mayor?
I, I think that's a slam dunk.
You can, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's going already.
Yeah, it's going already.
Do we need to identify it on the work plan, the grant, do you?
I, I think it's just because it's just kind of, it, it, it provides a little bit more kind of emphasis and it helps me kind of really identify the, the top one.
And it's probably one of the most dangerous intersections, it is a dangerous intersection, yeah.
Okay, so on that one, and then there seemed to be some traction on the, the impound yard.
Let me just kind of, let me just kind of, there's, I think there were two phases to the questions, everything else to one of the project. And then if we have the capacity to kind of do that, and I just wanna follow up on us, us program, but we do have the capacity and do that, we have everything kind of set. So I just wanted to kind of like double back on that to make sure that the council knows that we can do that. Okay, good, all right.
So then, Mr. Mayor, would you check the consensus on the, the impound yard? Just because I've heard a lot of discussion.
And I do think it's also timely. Listen, said that if you were to get something done in time for an impound yard, not just for the summer, but for year-round, maybe it'll start now to get it done even for six months to nine months. So I would like to have that Susan, you have any tests, you work on that?
Yeah. Is that something that we should be looking at as part of the community lands as?
Yes, but potentially we use the.
Yeah, there's intersection.
There's an intersection there, there's also intersection with, in department because from what I was told by Richard, the best way to do it is to create a, a day-use impound site as its own use and then have it added to the existing, let me, you know, the, the car. Zoning, right.
I'll go ahead.
Yeah.
There's a question for you. Is it just a really nice apartment ride?
I like your thing.
Well, I mean, I, what they really need is to have like a mobile office for the person there, you know, and also getting a, for, they're all mobiles so that we don't have to come up with anything to the ground. We just have some fencing, portable office, portable body. And that's really all it takes, but it's, it's a zoning issue that we have to deal with first.
Okay, well, with Grayson after the point, you may, you may have to pass through the planning department, may not have to pass through.
And that's why I bring up the fact that it will have impact on our performance.
We can put it on the list, but we're not, we're not gonna have to have this in January as part of the pass.
Well, staff can come back to you and say, hey, you know what? Well, Steph can come back to you and say, hey, you know what, on the impound line, we got it, or, you know, well, it's going to have to be delayed a bit because of Steph and issues, right?
Correct. It would be characterized as temporary.
So, so out of the five, we, we've got two selected, so there's three left. Rather than me suggesting, I feel like I should be deferential to the council to see what you want to bring forth.
Well, we've got, well, you say two, we've got the Los Flores and the impound, but we also have the Plus Park body.
Snack Shack, right.
So that's.
Is there, is there consensus on that one?
Definitely.
Well, I mean, because we were taking off, am I correct, did we take off the permanence niche, or the skate park? No, that's evolved. So we're just adding that to that, so it's not really.
No, it's a new.
They are distinct projects.
They resisted us melting them together because it were cheap, so we got to do them in several months.
And I think because the skate park is going to be done in a few months, like, it's probably.
Well, hopefully the snack shack is too.
Snack Shack is. You got bathroom.
That's part of the, that's part of the skate park, the bathroom.
Oh, that skate park.
But Rob, they're distinct projects, right?
They are, yes.
Or whoever, right?
Yeah, I, you know, they're kind of in different phases.
Complementary, but distinct.
There's like different phases of a project, so like one will be.
That plus parking crew.
Well, one will be kind of like ramp up construction, the other one will just ramp up design, kind of, they'll be at different phases.
I appreciate the arms because they help me see what's going on.
But I'm not.
It's a balance.
Yeah, it's a balance, thank you.
I mean, you got to ramp up.
So like, like resources-wise, I can kind of have in both construction and design, I have the staff to kind of accommodate both of those phases in, in that project. Can they be combined or?
So then evolving the skate park into Malibu Plus Park improvements and.
Or, I'm going to put it out there, just adding another one in there because this is going to be kind of.
You don't want to.
Kind of a position.
I think the problem is that you're not going to put them out to bid at the same time because the skate park is ready to get on the other one, isn't it?
Well, but we have, we did hire the consultant to provide public works with the means in identifying the type of, right?
The what?
The consultant for the snack shack?
Yeah, we're bringing it to council.
Of what they're, of who we're selecting in order to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
But they're out to bid and now you're going to bring it back that identifying who that consultant is. So we're already kind of down the road of having a, a consultant identified, of giving recommendations to how to facilitate the best.
For book?
Yeah, I, well, I mean, it's for the.
For the snack shack.
The snack shack, yeah, we have a, we have a consultant that's going to start the design, you know, what we got to bid, the local contractor or working on skate park.
So it's, it's two distincts.
So that's it, just.
Jerry, you want it together as one project, does that make sense?
I, I think it makes sense for everybody's understanding to keep them separate.
Yeah.
Public understands it better, one might get, God forbid, one might, you know, have some delay or some issue, and I, you know, I just don't want to confuse.
I don't need delays or issues.
You're going to bring this back to January, so I think we can always combine them later if we think it's important.
Yeah, let's do it separate.
So, so there's the three, so the two remaining, what is the appetite for our council members present?
Well, I think Yolanda has a couple of points on the model of the water conservation pledge, and I think that's pretty much the sidewalk of your department. We can really decide your board's side.
Uh, yes, but we have the daily.
That's part of it, yeah. Well, do we have the consent by law of the.
Well, the water.
Hi, nice. Uh, it is different, I know, saying council a, a group of them what it is.
Alexis?
Before we get, and I'm happy to arm wrestle Yolanda if we need to, but PCH safety is also not anywhere on either base.
Oh, right.
That's got to be there.
And, sorry.
Well, we think that's one of the loops, that's, but I do think.
But, but we also will only have room for twenty, and, and it's not just speed cameras, even though that's going to be the big bear, but we've got the master planning of what we're working with on Caltrans, we've got, there's so many other things, so I just, as long as that can be on there as well.
If you allow people liberty, I was, I was going to suggest that we add as PCH safety, and I don't know if there's consensus on it, the fund balance policy. And then the, the last comment I was going to make is, even if these projects don't get on the priority list, it doesn't mean that there's not, it doesn't mean that Steph won't try to work on it, if we can get to it, if, if, if we find the low-hanging fruit and we can knock it out, we will do it. Like, for example, Trevor and I have had several conversations about how we might go forward on the, on the low-cost accommodations plan and get some judgments on that.
And for example, Yolanda knocked out three of these.
Exactly, right, right. So, so that was, that was going to be my suggestion, that we put PCH safety and the fund balance policy on, and, and I think that'll.
Yeah, I think, yeah, PCH safety is going to suck up an enormous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We appreciate the acknowledgement.
Oh, yeah.
And I think the fund balance is critical in order to be able to get the park, because the park.
Community land.
Yeah.
And, and I think this to add to my other item that you mentioned there was the last last, that is just at the top of our priorities and we will continue to with those waters as safety items.
It's not only parks.
But it's, you know, more operations and that is emergency to have the remediation, so we will continue to monitor.
Thank you, Yolanda. Appreciate that. So you have fund balance policy, you have the impound yard, you have the snack shack as a separate distinct project from skate park, and PCH safety, so that gets us to the five.
I think that sucks.
All the else.
Are there any concerns from staff before we do that about those projects and the allocation of resources, everybody confirmed?
Yeah, I think it's a question.
I would just ask for clarification, the Los Flores, Rambla Pacifica intersection improvements, is that?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
So it's twenty-five, thirty-one, thirty-three, fund balance policy and PCH safety.
I think Steph has got to take a real close look, I mean, this, some of these things are going to take up an enormous amount of time. PCH safety is easy to save, but boy, making it all work and understanding it all, so just, you know, when you go back and look at this stuff and you allocate your, your hours, you would, I mean, be conservative, because it's, it's a lot of time.
Great, great point, Councilmember, I was getting on a green point, I appreciate your point on that.
Um, do we, does public safety have capacity for goats, generators and parking? And. Oh, well, so the, the goats, probably not, that would be, and we would need more staffing to do that happen, it's, because think about it, we have to give a goat contractor, you have to sign people up, you want to manage the whole thing, I mean, it's, it's a little more labor, it's not typical, it's just labor intensive. And right now, our, our liaisons are, they're pretty maxed out. I mean, we could hire another one, but that's what it would take because they're maxed out, it is, because they're restricted on their hours, they're all half-time. Right. Um, one thing I will say that we're, we're in the middle of hiring an admin, and so I'm still kind of waiting to see how that helps to sort of relieve some of the workload on staff, so it could be, say, three months or so that we might be able to revisit this and see how, how that impacts the workload of staff who right now is having to do a lot of just, you know, administrative, not consensus. It's important, I mean, you know. Yeah, it's all important work, but it still takes time and everybody does. Exactly, so I really am looking forward to seeing how that helps to make room in people's schedules to do some of these other things. With the parking, that's actually on our, on our to-do list because there's this subdivision program that the state, they analyze all the neighborhoods and all the neighborhoods with only in one way out for our neighborhoods that were identified with that. That was the recommendation, was to do reflect parking restrictions. So I've talked to Jerry and the other liaisons, like, what are, I was wondering, are there some streets that should be urgently addressed? And so there, we're going to really look at those and see where and kind of explore what if it's going to get some parking restrictions in there, you know? But it, it's on our radar and I think it is doable.
So, let's think about it with a generated perspective, I mean, this is, we're talking about, we're going to have four months. Do I have time to kind of reassess where we are, especially with the budget going up, you know, return, because people.
But it also goes back to what City Manager McClear says about, we're always going to be looking at what we do have time for allocating the resources, and if the admin ends up being dynamo and frees up all this time, then we could look at it too, right? So it's constantly doing that with staff.
Yeah, point, measure R, I mean, you know, the, the funding we got to buy some of the land, is that?
Six point six million.
Is that on our radar, is it anything we got to be thinking about, or is that sitting in a bucket someplace all quiet, nice, and don't have to worry about it?
When you, you mean the, the monies that were used to.
Well, we got money, we're supposed to do something with that money.
We are. Should, and, and there's a little bit of flexibility, but in, in relation to the community lands, there's a certain amount of public parking space that has to be available.
To cover with that, okay.
Yes, and that's.
I'll, I'll, if Dr. Goodenby is, okay.
That is. And if I can, just really quick, Mayor and Council, it's, the snack shack is a piece of number thirty-three, I just want to say that for the record. So it's twenty-five, thirty-one, the snack shack, because Malibu Plus Park improvements are a little bit more intensive and involve a few more capital projects, so we don't want to just eliminate and move up and set an unclear expectation, so.
Ooh, okay, that's a great clarification, thank you.
You guys have anything else that we, no?
We have goats on January.
We can bring it back, yeah.
Thank you. We missed us. We're good with that?
Well done, well done on time, everybody, you crushed it, well done, well done. I would like to know for the record that there were no candy dish on this aisle over here. Just throwing that out there. I didn't have a chance to bear with.
Jerry, I would advise you to note that candy dish, on some places, they're empty.
I appreciate the judgment.
Talk about a can of worms, I apologize.
We made it all the way through.
Council, you're.
Cool. Thank you, Council, thank you, Mr. Mayor.